Okay, we're going to call to order the November 2024 meeting of the Homewood Planning Commission. If we could please start with the roll call.
All right. Mr. Goulas.
Here.
Ms. Andrus.
Here.
Mr. Broadhead.
Here.
Mr. Armstead.
Here.
Mr. Respinto.
Here.
Mr. Harwell.
Here.
Ms. Wilcutt.
Here.
Mr. Henninger.
Here.
And Mr. Roberts.
Here, thank you. All right, next on the agenda is approval of the minutes from October, October 1. I took a look at them, they looked fine to me, less their concerns. I would entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes and approved.
Second.
Did you get that?
No. Yeah.
I move to approve.
All right, thanks. And second, uh...
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the minutes are passed. Are we going to move on to communications? Mr. Armstead, do you have any as vice chair?
I do not.
And I do not as chair other than, I do, because we have a pretty good crowd tonight. Once we get to the public portion of these cases, if we have people coming up, I would just ask you to kind of be concise and to the point, not repetitive. I don't think at this point I'm going to impose any sort of time limitations, but if it gets repetitive or takes too much, it takes a lot more time than is necessary, we might do that. So, and if you do come up, whether you're an applicant or a member of the public to speak on these cases, if you could speak into the microphones, the dais up here, it just helps us with record keeping, so we would appreciate that. And finally, if you do come up and speak, if you would write your name on the pad up there, as well as state your name and address, and write down your address as well, we'd appreciate that as well. All right, moving along, we have no old business. A new business, the first two cases are related, RS 24-11-01 and AD-24-11-02, both relating to Brookwood 579, 598, and 701 Brookwood Village. If the applicant can come forward and discuss what your cases are about.
Good evening, I'm Mark Clark, I'm with Shoal Engineering. I am the surveyor of record for the subdivision case that is before you. What we're proposing is a resurvey of Lot 1F, which is a portion of the Brookwood Mall subdivision. It's only one lot out of it, and we are proposing to divide it into three separate lots for the redevelopment. And I'll be happy to try and answer any questions.
If that's it, then we're going to, well, I didn't know if you wanted to present both cases at once, or if you want to do these separately, that's fine too. And that's up to the applicant.
We can, we can do them separate. I can address the plat itself, and then we'll go to the redevelopment.
Okay, well, that sounds good to me. If you're finished with your initial presentation, we need to open this up, so I will open up the public portion of the hearing. If anyone here from the public wants to speak to the resurvey case, please come up at this point and, again, be succinct as much as possible. Okay, seeing no one, we'll close the public portion of the case and open up for questions from the commission.
I had a question about, you know, in the early stages of, once the property was purchased, there were discussions of sort of a holistic development that would encompass both Mountain Brook and Homewood. And, you know, we were real diligent about working and communicating with our counterparts in Mountain Brook. But I see now with the division in the survey here, that it obviously goes down the Mountain Brook line. Is there, so everything is just, at this point, planned for the Homewood side?
That's correct. Everything, as far as this, this plat is concerned, is in the Homewood side.
I'd like to ask a question. And I understand the intent of the belt property. Why was, what was the purpose of the lone lot? This is just a surface parking lot. Why was that carved out the way that was?
Well, it's really just the remnant leftover of the lot, the original Lot 1F. The Lot 1K, which is the part that is going to be redeveloped at this time, the way it was, the lines fell and what they were purchasing and the development was going, that's, that's just a remnant part that was left over.
So, at this point, no development plans for that?
At this point, no development plans for that lot.
My question would be, even though these are separate lots, we all know, I mean, it's still a continuous single structure. Are there plans to separate the structures down the line?
Not that I'm aware of.
So it'll just continue to be one big building with just separate uses in the interior?
Yes, part of the Lot 1K is the belt building, and then there's part of its parking deck. So, you know, that will be where the...
Can you talk about the demising wall that's in the parking deck?
Yes, certainly. There is a wall in the parking deck that separates, there's one along, on the easter, well, actually be on the westerly side, where one, I can't read the, 1D is, the yellow there, there's a actual structural wall, and then the structural parking deck, and then it's just joined where they walk across in the mall. And then the other line is, on the easterly side, is a seam as well in the parking deck.
Is there any demolition that's going to occur? Will there be any demolition with any of the freestanding structure, like, again, where the Mountain Brook line is, you know, there's a building on the other side of that line? Is it, will there be any demolition?
I'm not really aware of any, but that would probably be a question that would be better answered in the development plan.
Okay, you got it.
Just to ask the staff, I assume that dividing these partials, they still meet the minimum, if there are minimums for this particular zoning?
Yeah, from a subdivision standpoint, and it is... But I guess, speaking to Mr. Respinto's question, at this point in time, the larger lot is continued, going to stay one large lot. There's not going to be a piecemeal resurvey, to your knowledge, at this point in time.
The large part of Lot 1F?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that is correct.
It'll stay the same right now, for the time being?
As far as I'm aware of, that's correct.
No piecemeal subdivision of that, to your knowledge.
To my knowledge, no.
If there are no further questions, I'd entertain a motion to approve RS 24-11-01.
Second. Is this contingent on the passing of the development plan? Is that, did we talk about that?
Yeah, I guess that is a good question. It's part of the reason I thought maybe these be presented at the same time is, if we, yeah, I guess, are we pressing forward with the development plan? I guess the development plan doesn't go forward if the resurvey doesn't take place, does it?
Well, the resurvey could actually take place without the development plan.
Right, right.
So if you were, if you were fine with the resurvey, but wanted them to perhaps tweak the development plan in some way and come back?
Okay, and if they didn't want to subdivide or divide it up, because the development plan was, they don't have to file it, so it's just basically...
Yeah, it would be probable that if the resurvey were approved and the development plan, for whatever reason, was not, the owners may or may not choose to go forward to have it recorded. That, that would be their, their decision. Plan Commission would have approved it, but until it's recorded, it doesn't become effective. So if the owners, if the proposed amended development plan did not go forward as they desired, they may choose not to record it, and it'll stay the same.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I would entertain a motion. Second.
Who made the motion? I'm sorry, my back.
Yes, I'll make the motion.
You move.
Yeah.
And it was second, uh...
Second.
Okay, I'm sorry, my back is too...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Goulas.
Yes.
Ms. Andrus.
Yes.
Mr. Henninger.
I'm going to abstain as an employee of UEB Hospital as a relationship with Andrews.
Right. Mr. Armstead.
Yes.
Mr. Respinto.
Yes.
Mr. Harwell.
Yes.
Ms. Wilcutt.
Yes.
And Mr. Roberts.
Yes, so the resurvey passes.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next up is the related case. It's the amended development plan, AD 24-0, I'm sorry, -11-02. It is the Brookwood Village Belt redevelopment. The applicant is Shoal Engineering Company. If the, whoever's presenting would come up, please, again, state your name, address, write it on the pad, and again, explain your case to us.
Hello, Jess Cirkin, Shoal Engineering, applicant and civil engineer on the project. And kind of going hand in hand with the case that just went, we are looking to amend the existing final development plan for Brookwood Village, just for the portion of what's really within those, the red boundary, which is our, would be the new property line. So the former belt building and a portion of the existing mall and parking garage. If you're looking at the screen, on the left side of the parking garage where that red line is drawn, that's at a expansion joint in the building. So the top level of the mall to that point would be turned into parking as well, so it would become three stories of parking, the existing two levels in the garage, and then new parking on the existing mall. And then the existing belt building would be converted, and the reason why we're here today is to request a change from the existing approved use, which is retail, to get approval to change to a medical user. And that's really the overview of why we are here.
Okay, well, thank you. With that, we will open the public portion of this hearing. If anyone here from the public would like to come forward to speak to this case, this would be your opportunity to come forward.
I'd like to know if they've applied for a certificate of need yet?
I'm sorry, you need to state your name for the record.
Sorry, Beverly Lavoff. I was wondering if they've gotten a certificate of need yet for this medical facility from the state board?
Okay, we can ask that of the applicant, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jeremy Love. I'm here to speak not in favor of the development plan. I'm all for development in the city of Homewood, but I believe that if we use this facility as a medical use, it's going to do, it's going to hinder growth more than it is going to support growth. And I'm a big proponent in retail development, and I'm not a proponent in spot zoning. So, I want to see more retail options for the city of Homewood, mixed use at that. I believe that there are multiple options for Andrews to find a new location. You have Grandview Medical on 280. I'm on the abatement board as well, and so we have a property of facility on Bagby Drive that we've been dealing with for years, that's currently vacant. And that's, in my opinion, a great location for them to move to. But as far as Brookwood, I would like to see mixed use, hotel, restaurant, fitness. In regards to fitness, I would like to see the Shades Valley YMCA move to Brookwood Village location and build a new facility there, along with offices and restaurants and things of that nature. Mixed use, I believe that if we put in a medical facility, it's going to prevent future retailers, whether it's locally or nationwide, from moving to this, to the Brookwood Village location, because it won't complement each other. No one's going to say, let's leave this restaurant and go to this orthopedic sports medicine facility. And I believe that, you know, like I said, it's just going to, it's not going to support as more, as much growth as we think it should, or possibly could. That's why I want to see more retail development at this location, recreational as well, hospitality, you name it. But, yeah, I'm speaking against this development plan as it is right now.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Love. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak to this case?
I didn't plan to come speak, but I'm going to. I'm Ashley Condon, and I represent the hotel and restaurant community. I work for Helms Briscoe, which is the world's largest hotel site selection company. We have 1,400 people worldwide and put over $2 billion worth of hotel rooms into the market on global, annual basis. So I wanted to preface it with that, because I want you to know where I'm coming from. And I certainly agree with Jeremy on his points about hospitality and restaurants, things to do retail. I know we've seen multiple, many multi-use properties built throughout the United States that really attract outsiders coming in to spend money. I often look at Birmingham and feel like we're missing the mark when it comes to driving economic development and growth into our community, and I feel like this is a great opportunity. We have at hand with the space that's there at Brookwood. I'm not necessarily opposed to the Andrews Medical Facility. They are a client of mine through their institutes. They too hold conferences and events. They likewise draw a lot of outsiders into our market who need hotel space. I only ask that we consider the, the property as a whole, when we're considering whether we take Andrews or not, what else is available for us to develop on that site. One thing that Birmingham lacks tremendously is meeting space. When we, Church of the Highlands purchased Scrooge Conference Center, we lost a ginormous conference center. D Club is private, so you can't get in there unless you have a membership. People really don't go downtown. They don't want it. They feel it's dangerous. They feel the property's outdated, despite the fact that they've added the legacy, done renovations to the Legacy Arena and added Protective Life. Those are really geared toward religious conferences and football, sports, arena. But when you talk about corporate and association events and meetings, we really lack that space here. The day they put a shovel in the ground at Ross Bridge, I told them, you're not building a hotel large enough. So, that hotel, if you probably don't know this, people often will ask, well, how much business does Birmingham really have when it comes to meetings and events? Birmingham, Ross Bridge probably attracts more people into that hotel from places like Atlanta, Nashville. People come here for the destination. They don't come here because they work and have their corporate headquarters here. So I just want you to be mindful of that, that when we talk about economic development, I feel like we have an opportunity to bring a lot more business and tax dollars into our market through that arena. I don't know to what capacity we could build a particular property there, and I'm sure it would have some resistance to it, because as with any development, you're going to see an increase in traffic and demand. But I do think the way it's situated right at 280, we have really a goldmine here. And I just ask that you consider, like I do, what other possibilities they are, and I'd certainly love further conversation following tonight's presentation.
Yeah, Mr. Love, you had another comment?
Yes, I did. I thought something else. Jeremy Love, again. When you think of Homewood and shopping, where do you think of? Soho, Lakeshore. Those places are kind of, I'm not going to say dying, but they're aging. I fear that 20, 30, 40, 50 years from now, there's not really going to be many options to shop in Homewood. Most people are just going to go down 280, to the Summit, go to Hoover, to Stadium Trace, or River Chase, or go out to Leeds, or go out to Atlanta, or Nashville somewhere. Me being a homeowner, property owner in Homewood, I would like to have somewhere here in Homewood where I can take my family, go shopping, dining, stay at a hotel, holidays coming around, having family, stay at a hotel, handle business, do the whole nine yards. So that's, that's my last comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any further comment from the public?
Sorry, I want you to step back. Uh, Nate, can you say? I'm Nate Carlson, and live here in Homewood, and also have a couple of businesses. I think, my question, I guess mainly for this group, is kind of twofold. One would be just if we take the, if we take this plan kind of piece by piece, which I think overall, I mean, Andrews is a, that's a very solid brand. I think all of us from around here know them and know them well, and I know they do things the right way. One of the things that I think I've seen in my corner of the earth where Reel &amp; Rosemary is, which is our business, is maybe the use case for parking has shifted, certainly over the last 10 years, with where our business is. And now we have a parking structure that's deeded to regions, and there's difficulties in how that, they have excess capacity in their parking now because of the use of the office space, but the general public doesn't necessarily have easy, easier, easy access to that. And I think, you know, again, this has been like a, a very underutilized resource for the city of Homewood for a while, but where, as this gets more and more activated, which I hope it does, and I think something like this could obviously kickstart that, how is the parking going to be thought about for where that ball is going to be and moved towards over the next five to seven years? And I don't know how that, I guess the question for the group more broadly is just, how do y'all think about that in conjunction with dividing up the parcels, I guess, in pieces, or kind of taking a more holistic approach?
Okay, seeing no one else coming forward, we'll close the public portion of the case, and the applicant could please come up, come back up to answer questions. And maybe we start with some of the questions that were posed by the people. I think it was one question about certificate of need, and then I guess you can answer, you know, kind of give us an overview of the parking, at least for the existing plan.
And if there are any retail options that you know about, that might be a possibility for the future? Well, yeah, and if you can just sort of address what we talked about in the rezoning. You know, we had a few questions, rezoning, that sort of got redirected to this portion, i.e. is there going to be demolition? You know, do you have a broader plan for the property? You know, how does this fit into that broader plan? What's going to happen on the Mountain Brook side? If you can kind of address that holistically.
I can walk all through the parking. Don't want to pull up that.
We cannot answer the C O N question.
Yes. But, so, those, these parking divots hopefully can kind of clear up the parking, because there's existing, the existing garage is going to be reused. Again, where that red line is drawn is at the existing expansion joint. So there is still more parking garage on the other side of it that would not be on the property. But, all of the parking that's going to be provided is intended to be utilized for this project. So everything on the site that's going to be provided needs, like, we need that parking to meet our minimums and also provide for the type of user that would be in that facility. But, does that kind of, it wouldn't be like just old parking not utilized?
Sure, so you're saying that the development plan, the requirements for a certain number of parking spaces based on the size and the use, et cetera, and that you're in compliance with those, those requirements?
What about the structure that's on the other side of that, where the parking is now? So obviously, that structure goes on past there. What's going to happen in that structure?
At this time, that, there's no plans beyond what we're looking at on the screen. So that, for the time being, would be in place.
Is the plan to sell this property to Andrews?
Yes, outlined in the red.
Okay. And Andrews is here tonight, or are they here to speak?
They do, I may have represented here, yes.
I'm interested in, I guess, you know, is this a taxable situation, or is this a not-for-profit? I would think Andrews would be a for-profit company that would provide tax base to the city. Is that a valid question in this form?
It's a valid question, if they can answer it, I guess.
Yeah, and we're just representing the current owner of the mall, is who we're representing.
Is the rezoning contingent on the sale of that place?
It is not.
The resurvey.
Just a change in building, the belt building.
Yeah, but it's, it's the development contingent on the sale of that place, or not? So is the sale of that, or?
Yes.
Is this development plan?
Yes.
So is it specific to the use?
Yes.
Or is it going to be considered a non-situation? You know, I guess the question I have is, one of them at least, is, you know, there's adjacent community that's across the street, there's quite a bit of sort of siren noise, ambulance going by, I guess, going to Brookwood. What, what impact do you see for the community compounding that because of this facility? Is it more of a sort of private outpatient type of situation, or should we have an expectation that there's going to be sort of more noise pollution based upon this, this particular change in use?
To my dollars, there's no ambulatory service, no ambulance, nothing that would be loud sirens.
Okay.
They also would not have a bus.
Yeah, and in the, the state EMS rules, we can't transport to a building like this emergency anyway. It's got to go to the ER, so... emergency anyway. It's gotta go to the ER, so there wouldn't be a, an emergency siren based headed into this building unless they're transporting somebody out that has, something has gone wrong.
Is there any other, or like, where approvals are needed for, for sell that place?
No, I don't know that answer.
On the certificate of need, is my understanding it was issued. We've been working on it for about two summers, but I think they have it in hand.
Is there a representative, maybe we don't, I'm sure the committee gives answers.
Hello. My name's Rich Candy. I'm here to ask a few guys have questions that relate to this.
Could, could you stand there? Yep.
Yeah, sure.
Good, thanks.
Was there a live question?
I think just, if you could talk briefly about the use of the property, what, you know, generally the statistics, what, what do you, you've got ORs or procedure rooms, you've got rehab, what, what, what's the use of the property?
Yeah, general clinic use on the ground floor with an ASC on the second floor. The clinic will be accompanied by physical therapy and imaging through MRI.
So, ambulatory surgery, so?
Is there any, is there any grand tour approvals outside of this that would be required for transaction, for, for sale of that place?
Uh, municipal approvals?
They may be, if these, these questions were asked, right, we end up before it'd be developed, like, a community development plan. What, what other things have to take place outside of, uh, City Council that would prevent the sale from taking place that would require either canceling this development plan, doing it, or having a future.
Right. Yeah, for the sake of this meeting, uh, and you're in the business as well, general real estate provisions.
Okay, and you did tell us that there was some sort of gov- other governmental requirement. Okay, that's a, just, uh, not there.
Is there a projected tax benefit per year for the city of Homewood for this project?
Not at this time.
Well, is it, is it, is it, is it private? Does it consist?
It is. No, it's private, correct.
So, you, you would be.
It'd be taxable. I was just curious, you know.
Was your question?
Like, when Target came, they had estimates.
Will the city receive taxes, or was your question, is the city getting incentives?
Well, I mean, that's interesting as well. I, I don't think we're giving incentives. I think I would've heard about that at this point, but, um, I'm, I'm guessing there is some tax income that the city would get for this. I'm just curious if there's been any thought put into that as far as the selling point for this project.
Uh, no, at this time, not for, not for this approval.
Is there anyone that would be willing to talk to the sort of big picture of what, I know you guys are specifically with Andrews, but is there anybody in the, you know, from Fairways that would be open to talking about sort of the big vision of what the rest of the property would look like? I agree with, you know, Ms. Condon and Mr. Love that, um, you know, there's so much opportunity there, and there's so much that we do need, meeting spaces, that is certainly definitely one of them. And, um, another that had been talked about, another proposals. Is there anyone from Fairways here that would address that?
Yeah, sure, no, I'll take that one. Again, Paul Darden with Fairway Investments.
Oh, sorry, sorry, Paul.
No.
Thinking you were, okay, sorry.
So, one of the owners of the mall, uh, we're, we're local here. I literally stared at the mall outside of my office window. Um, so grew up going there as a kid. So, yeah, we, you know, we see this as a very exciting opportunity to really get something kick-started, as was said before. Um, a- and we do see the opportunity. Um, you know, we do believe in this being one of the greatest opportunities that is, exists in our state, um, to be, you know, reimagined one day, uh, for what the future of Brookwood can be. I can't speak to any specifics right now. We do have plans that we have been diligently working on since we purchased and assembled the entire, uh, property, which, um, is over fifty acres now. Uh, so we assembled that over some time, and we've been working on that. Appreciate y'all's patience. I know you're all anxious like we are to see what the future brings for us. Um, and, and we do see, you know, a great future for it, one that we can bring it back to life. Um, but can't speak to the specifics of what that looks like, and this is really just the first opportunity now to present something that, um, that can, like they said, kick-start.
I think one concern that I thought I heard from Mr. Love, uh, and Ms. Condon, and especially Mr. Love is, you know, without having some idea of the remaining two-thirds of the, of the use, would it become a disjointed sort of experience for the people that live in Homewood? For, for Fairway, you're right, you, you're able to, to, um, to sell off a third of it, right, to, to a, a good customer, right, a good patron, but is there a cohesiveness that will go along with the remaining two-thirds that would actually benefit the citizens of Homewood, uh, by more than just, um, seeing something new come to Homewood on the, on that first third?
Yes, we do. And, and we do feel that, yeah, the medical use, parking, all things that have been brought, we, there will be, um, agreements in place to make that all one cohesive.
You'll break ground on this third. Your plan is to break ground the exterior portion at what time?
First quarter.
What, what's like February or mid-June? The Russians said, is that right?
No, that's, uh, Target is first quarter.
Back to Andrews.
Go ahead, sorry for.
I did not understand there was some provisions for temporary, uh, patients to stay at the facility as they underwent rehabilitation, or is that still a part of the plan, or is that out? Okay, no, no accommodations for, temporary accommodations for patients as they undergo?
Yeah, not, not part of this plan.
I may have misunderstood. All right, uh, thank you.
What percentage, back to the Andrews representative, I'm sorry, what, what percentage of this would you consider new business or new, you know, people coming to Birmingham for this facility versus kind of transition from existing facilities in, in the Birmingham area?
Would you say, uh, is your intent on visitors, or is your intent on employees?
Visitors, I guess, folks coming into town.
One at both.
Yeah, one at both. We'll take any information we can get.
Uh, I think that through natural growth of the business, um, there's an expectation of additional patients that would come in. I think from an employee perspective, there is going to be a de novo portion of this to where there's a new business that's a part of it, along with, um, natural horizontal growth from just movement. So, I think that, uh, the city and the community, as our, as our statement says, can expect, um, you know, real job growth and opportunities right here in Homewood, uh, that through their size and, um, additional offerings, I would say, are going to bring in more patients as well. Percentage of how many? Hard to say at this point.
Do you have any estimates on those jobs? I know you just said it's hard to say, but as, as far as estimates on creative jobs in Homewood?
Um, not at the moment.
I mean, or would there be in the new facility, would be with the growth, or I would assume there'd be expectation of having more employees than, than you currently have? Is that fair to say?
Fair to say.
Where are the existing Andrews facilities currently in Birmingham? I'm just trying to gauge the whole, uh, transition versus growth question.
There are facilities in Coleman, there are facilities in Gardendale, Trussville, Pelham, Hoover, City of Birmingham.
Is the plan for those to go away and this be the, the hub, or those to stay?
No, I think that satellite system remains.
Okay.
Ultimately, we're bringing Andrews to Homewood, right, easily to break the cost. I think it would be helpful for now, to the council, to figure out more positive information about the actual tangible benefits that are there, more, and some questions that we currently have here, but the council, obviously, too, is, okay, what's the, like, agreeing to this, what's the long-term negative to, or the loss of opportunity, that tax revenue, from a retail perspective? So, the more you talk about the actual tangible benefits of the whole project, there's a lot of questions, there's a lot of, it's, it's as good as you can. I get, I get, right, but it's, I think that a lot of the questions you're here, we're, we're given, right now, zero revenue, right, but there's a lot of potential revenue, so we usually, this is one huge revenue, but how do you quantify it?
Right.
And how do you deal with less, aside what potentially could be, uh, could be far beneficial to the city, right, that we're, the more you can talk about that, I know that's sometimes chicken in the egg, you know, when you talk about certain things, again, the more information you provide, the better. Everybody's up here, we're also the same.
Okay, and everyone, I, I don't think I said this at the very beginning, but tonight's vote is a recommendation to the City Council on, on the amended development plan, so this isn't the end, obviously, of this. I'll just kind of speak to the points that Mr. Harwell was just making.
Well, I would agree with Mr. Harwell's point, and to that end, I would make a motion to approve, uh, A D twenty-four eleven oh two.
That's our who's taken it? Okay. All right. Mr. Broadhead?
Yes.
Mr. Gulas?
Yes.
Ms. Andres?
Yes.
Mr. Henninger?
I'm staying.
I'm sorry, you're abstaining, I'm sorry. Mr. Armstead?
No.
Mr. Respinto?
Yes.
Mr. Harwell?
Yes.
Ms. Wilcott?
No.
And Mr. Roberts?
Yes, so this will go forward with a positive recommendation. What was the vote total? Six-two?
Yes.
Six-one.
There's more on the yes than no.
Two-no, one, sixty-one, one recusal.
Thank you.
Right.
Okay, our next case is another amended development, um, plan case. It is A D eleven dash oh-three. The applicant is Under Vulcan LLC. And, uh, are you Mr. Crowsgard?
Yes.
If you could just state your name, um, into, into the microphone and on the pad, that'd be great, and address as well.
My name's Brian Crowsgard from Under Vulcan. I'm at one seventy-three Oxmoor Road in West Homewood. And as noted, we have an amended development plan for the property at one sixty-nine Oxmoor Road, which is next door to my office. This is a property that I purchased a couple of years ago and had a previously approved development plan. We're submitting some, I guess I would call minor changes, uh, to the development plan. One of the primary changes is on occupancy to make it less specific in terms of the appropriate occupants. The previous development plan had specific use cases for a restaurant, a salon, office, and retail. Uh, what we're doing here is seeking a wider approval, all in accordance with what W H D outlines for, um, occupants that still require three spaces per thousand square feet. So, essentially, the businesses and services appropriate to W H D and appropriate to our parking calculations that we meet, but less specific as to which individual tenants. Um, the other changes that are, uh, are proposed here are a move of the ingress and egress to pull it in a little bit, whereas the previous plan had it as a shared drive out between the two properties that I own. This actually pulls it, uh, interior to just this one lot, and it doesn't affect the ingress and egress of the next-door lot. Um, and then we're removing patio space that was unnecessary for, um, the left side of the building, and we're still maintaining the awning structure and storefront windows and all those things for a four-tenant building. I'm happy to answer. Any questions, if y'all have?
Uh, well, thank you. We're gonna have to open up the public portion, and then we'll ask you questions, if that's okay?
Of course.
This is, this is a public meeting. If anyone here from the public is here to speak on this case, this will be your opportunity to come forward. Okay, and seeing no one, we'll close the public portion of the case and, um, open it up for questions. Okay, and again, I'm just, I think I'm just summarizing what you just said, but the primary purpose of what you're doing here is to make some of the uses, or not uses, I guess, that, I don't know if that is a use, but you had in here, it was gonna be a re- a restaurant and some retail space and spa, I think you said, and you're making it more generic?
Yes, W H D has very specific definitions for occupancy, and that makes it pretty tough from a tenant structure, uh, perspective. And so, essentially, this is seeking to allow businesses and services for retail office, professional services, all appropriate to W H D, but less specific.
Sure. And then you mentioned that, uh, there'll be an additional, the plan now will be to have an exit onto Oxmoor Road?
Well, it would always was. It just moves it interior to the property, so it's not a shared drive with the next-door property.
One, one seventy-three will have its own entrances.
It, it already does.
Right.
Yes, sir.
So, no longer shared.
That's right.
That's right.
Can you talk a little bit, Brian, about a couple, like, I guess, an ideal tenant there? I think, looking at this property, being a West Homewood resident, and this being part of the village, the, you know, the whole idea of the master plan is, is really kind of community-facing businesses, um, in this West Homewood Village, and, you know, of course, restaurants, obviously, and, and things like that, um, bring people out the street. Uh, it sounds like we're moving a little away from kind of that idea, more toward, um, you know, private offices possibly. Is there any room for anything kind of community-facing in this building?
Eric, you're opening me up to a, a marketing opportunity here. Um, so there's, you know, we have a signed lease for the left unit. There's a draft lease that's ready to be signed for the middle unit. Um, the right unit and the upstairs are, are available. They're not remarketed yet, pending, um, essentially the, the permitting process. But, um, you know, my idea here is essentially to make it, um, part of a mixed-use community. You know, I work here every day for my own business, and I think it's an amazing place to work and also to live. And, um, that includes a lot of different types of businesses and services. I run a surveying business on this street front, and, uh, you know, it's a nice place to work. Uh, there's gonna be a physical therapist in the building. Um, what impacted the decision in terms of what we're doing here is really, uh, based on infrastructure. Adaptive reuse of an office building is not a simple task, and to do higher, um, higher use infrastructure for mechanical, electrical plumbing, things like that, it was quite difficult. So, I guess if I was to say target businesses, it would be things that are a little bit lower density than some of the higher entertainment uses. Uh, but I think it's important, for instance, when you have businesses and people working or having medical office or things like that in the same area where they're also having coffee and having lunch and, and, you know, a true mixed-use community, I don't think we're straying away from that idea.
And you'll still be getting rid of that fence?
Absolutely. The, well, on the, uh, front, the, the proposal still keeps it on the Gillen Street just for separation, uh, or Gillen Road, Gillen, you know where I'm talking about, uh, to just maintain a separation with the residents. That's a wrought iron fence, and then there's a wooden fence on the rear of the property that'll be new and replaced. But, yes, the, the, all the fencing on the front has to go.
I make a motion to approve?
I'm second.
Who's second, Mr. Respinto? Okay. All right. Mr. Broadhead?
Yes.
Mr. Gulas?
Yes.
Ms. Andres?
Yes.
Mr. Henninger?
Yes.